Okay, let's bring this Tuesday, December 28th, 2021 Reno County Commission meeting to order. At this time, we will stand for a pledge of allegiance to the American flag and a prayer with Darryl Peterson, Pastor Darryl Peterson from Grace Christian Church.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, we just come before you with great honor and Father, just with a great heart. We thank you, Father, for the privilege of coming before the council commissioners today. That, Father, we have the privilege of coming before you today. And, Father, we know that you're the God of wisdom, the God of understanding. And, Father, some of the requirements is that we are to seek wisdom and with wisdom get understanding. Father's leadership, we thank you for the privilege. That, Father, you're the God of all wisdom, that we can come together with you to understand, to listen, to get directions, to do so many things that, Father, you can help us to get through, to make quality decisions. And I just pray for each and every one of the commissioners, Father. We just thank you for them. We've had blessings over them, blessings over the leadership in this county. And, Father, it's a wonderful county. It's a wonderful city. We thank you, Father God, that we're blessed as we come in and we're blessed as we go out. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. My welcome and announcements, I want to really commend my fellow commissioners on the time that they spent working on the commission and the people's interest, working with and listening to the people and our constituents. And I would encourage those out there to continue to let us know what your thoughts are and ideas are. I think that's important to us so that we can gain direction in the way the county operates. And also in looking at some of the, and the reason I bring this up is because in some of the information received, we've got that 15-year-old plan coming up, to being a 15-year-old plan of comprehensive and various SWOT analysis that has to do with economic development. And as I read through that, and I'm sure you noticed the same thing, is that a lot of those, we've been talking about forever. They're still on there. And so hopefully, maybe we can tackle some of these items on the Comprehensive Plan and the Strategic Economic Development Plan. And we know we can't do them all, but maybe we can pick out some that we feel are of prime importance and set some goals and work on those for the coming year. But I just, again, want to thank fellow commissioners for our time that we've worked together and for Randy, our administrator, for putting up with us all and our ideas and things and conversations. And the staff who has had to deal with us and appreciate their input. And I hope we can continue to have those good discussions along in the future of this coming year and work out those things which we may have a little conflict on, but turn into agreement. So I thank the staff for their being so good to the citizens of Reno County. At this time, we'll have public comments, not on the agenda. And Barbara, you're here from Department of Aging.
Good morning, Commissioners. Barbara Lillinghorn, Director of the Department of Aging and Public Transportation. Happy New Year. I am here today to invite you to the January 18th meeting of the Reno County Council on Aging. We would love to have a representative from the commission attend this meeting. It's special because we have visitors coming from the South Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging. Jody Abington, the director, will be attending. And we will also have the newly elected chairman of her board, who is Dr. Marilyn Graham, which is a name that you probably recognize. They will be talking to us about the role and function of the SCK AAA and how they work with the individual counties. We serve as sub-grantees for the funding that comes through the SCK AAA into this area. So they will be taking the opportunity to visit all 10 counties in our region, and Reno County will be first. So I would love to have a representative attend if possible.
Commissioner?
What's the time of the meeting?
It is at 1:30, and it will be in the Arcat Transfer Station.
Commissioner, one of the ten? Dr. Graham's from Hutchinson.
She is, yes.
I'm going to be out of town that day.
Daniel, did you put that in your schedule?
I might be out of town, but I'll get back to you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, can you do it?
New chairman, excellent. One of us will be there, okay?
Very good, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm sure Commissioner Friesen will try to make it. All right, is there any other comments from the public? Okay, there are none. We'll go to additions or revisions to the agenda. Randy, do you want to cover that?
Yes, I'd like to add, Register of Deeds, Michelle, the Register of Deeds had agreed to transfer $100,000 from the Herb Tech Fund, Register of Deeds Technology Fund, to the county's Technology Fund. She has by statute over $50,000 in the reserve. She actually has over $300,000, but has agreed for the county commission to approve a $100,000 transfer. So if that could be added to the consent.
All right, the commission will add that to the consent agenda. We've talked about that before, okay?
The other item we wanted on consent or business would be to approve Reno, excuse me, Reno County Economic Development Comprehensive Plan, which Joe had put together. That takes into account the 1997 strategic plan and mentions the economic development incentives that Reno County has. This is, would be approved, which is the precursor to two resolutions that follow that. That would create an Economic Development Reserve Fund and then a resolution that allows for the year-end transfer of, from General Fund to the Economic Development Reserve Fund.
Does the commission wish on that, put it on the consent agenda or to visit further in the business item?
I don't have a problem approving, I'd like to talk about it for a couple minutes, just in general.
Okay, let's put that on business items. Put it at the end of the business items, which would be Item B on seven. The two resolutions regarding economic development funds.
And then, did you, were you intending to put the Register of Deeds in the consent agenda?
Yes, yes.
And then, Commissioner, also add one attorney-client executive session. That would be the first executive session.
Yes, and that would be for attorney-client privileges. So we'll put that in front of the other two executive sessions that are on the agenda. Okay, Commissioner Friesen, do you have anything you'd like to add? Commissioner Sellers?
No.
And I have none. Okay. So the consent agenda consists of vouchers, bill payments owed by the county, and related taxi units, change orders 2021-1359, 1370, 1372, and 1373. The Board of County Commission meetings, minutes for November 23rd, November 30th, December 14th, and December 14th special meeting. Board appointment to the Reno County Public Transportation Commission, the appointment of trustee to Reno Township Board, Reno County, Reno County Health Department, HRSA, Human Resources and Service Administration grant for Rural Communities Opioid Response Program, then a planning case number 2021-12, a resolution revising and updating the November 2018 addition of the Comprehensive Plan by amending a portion of Chapter 7 and Chapter 9 to provide additional guidelines related to commercial wind energy conversion systems. Planning Case 2021-13, a resolution revising and updating the April 2016 addition of the Reno County zoning regulations by amending the table of contents, Article 1-105, Article 13, Article 15-111, and creating Article 24 to provide for additional guidelines related to commercial wind energy conversion systems. And a resolution pertaining to an application for a conditional use permit to establish an aggregate storage yard and the notice of transfer of funds made to General Tech Fund from the Register of Deeds Technology Fund. Item G, the resolution is 2021-35. Item H, the resolution is 2021-36. And Item I is Resolution 2021-36, or 37, excuse me, 37. We'll take a motion on the consent agenda. So moved. Second?
I would second that.
Okay.
Chairman, I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
On D, I would like the minutes to record that the two people being appointed are Francis Garcia and Doug Rice. It's in the extra data, but I think it should be in the minutes that those are the two appointees. And then on Item E, the appointment to the trustee of Reno Township Board of James Dahl.
Thank you for those.
I think it's good to have those in the minutes for future.
Thank you. With the minutes also reflect that Item I is the order journalizing the decision the board made at the last meeting to deny the application of, I'm going to say mid-states, although that's not the actual name of the applicant for that aggregate storage yard. That is that case. Yes, that's a, that's a resolution denying. Yes. Application, the CUP, okay? Thank you for clarifications, both of you.
I had a couple clarifying questions as well. I appreciate Commissioner Sellers taking one of those off the list for me. I also wanted to note, it was good to see a fellow past commissioner, Francis, Commissioner Garcia decide to be part of this transportation board. That's, that's good to see. Appreciate her continued work in Reno County. And then Sellers resolved my question on, I think it was just unclear in the, in the agenda item, who was being appointed? And there's two appointments, right, for that transportation item? The recommendation wasn't clear. Sometimes we see multiple applicants. So both applicants are, are being appointed, okay. Thank you. And then on the Reno County Health Department opioid response program, this seems like a good program that's needed in our county. Randy, is this something where we, we create staffing and, and the grant funds that? And then if the grant runs out, we stop? Or we just continue funding through county resources?
And probably, Carla, I think, do you want to answer that? And there are representatives with that grant. Seth is here.
Okay.
I believe he is funded by that grant.
Good morning, Commissioner Spremanickles, Director of Public Health for Reno County. So part of the, part of the request is to continue the work that that, individuals with our substance misuse grant has done already. So we do have a substance misuse health educator. Seth is here. If you've got further questions for Seth, but it's to continue that work. So if we did not have this, then we would have to come back to you and to, because Seth, Seth is currently funded through those grants and public health funds, is to then have his time go from substance misuse use grant coverage to public health. So the purpose of this grant was, would be not to increase staffing, I think is what you're asking. It is to retain Seth, Seth's position and the work that he has done with other agencies in Reno County and to increase the work that they've done. Did I say that correctly?
Can I, can I speak to that?
Sure. And then this is Bethany Jansen, she's our supervisor of our accounting and finance.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, the sus position was originally, although we did find grant funding for it to cover his position, his position was always intended to, if we did not have grant funding, to be taxpayer-supported. So we would not be losing a staff member in this important area. What we're trying to do is provide grants coverage so that this is not a continuing taxpayer issue. So this is actually a funding source that we found that we want to apply for so that we can continue to not burden the taxpayer for his salary. But we do consider the issue to be such a huge issue that, that his position was originally created to be a taxpayer-funded position, if necessary.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't necessarily have anything against the merits of, of the position or the, or the program. It's just sometimes I think we can lose track of how it's funded, and then it just falls into the taxpayer's lap without a conversation. And so I just would appreciate it if, if we don't get grant funding that we have to fight about.
Thank you. I have a question to Carla, if I might, on this same subject. In the dialogue of your application, you mentioned some other groups, I believe 13 Reno County Collaborative, and I think a couple other, if you'll help me with those. Are those determined how much of the funding that they get to be a budget that somebody creates or what?
So it's a requirement of the, of the grant that we, that we have a consortium membership. And so that's where Rise Up Reno Prevention Network, we also are teaming up with the Oxford Houses, Reno County Sheriff's Office, and then the New Beginnings Transitional Jobs Program. It hasn't been determined the exact specifics, of course, within those budget restraints of the grant funds, but we're working on that. We just wanted to make sure that we had the blessing, of course, to go forward with that.
So would that budget be determined after the grant is received or?
Well, we're going to submit a proposal along with the application, and with that, we'll go over it with the consortium to determine those exact specifics.
The needs of those different organizations.
Right. And the really nice thing about this, I mean, you can probably use your imagination when you see this, but teaming up with the Oxford Houses, the jail, and the Transitional Jobs Program, we're not only adding to the workforce, but we're giving those ones coming out of the jail a safe supportive living environment as well to live in and get reintegrated into the workforce as well. So then you're having a whole new workforce that's able to pass UAs and become a contributing member of society again. So then you have Rise Up Reno that focuses on the youth prevention, getting it from the, from the start. So really has a wide spectrum and, of course, the budget, of course, we'll, we'll work on that.
Yeah, I guess my request would be that when that is prepared and if it's approved, and I'd like to get a copy of that to see who's doing what.
Absolutely.
A better, better breakdown of the whole funding, expenses of the funding, I guess.
Sorry, I probably shouldn't have just stayed up there. From the accounting perspective, this is actually an application for a grant. It's a, it's a $5 million grant for three years. We get the opportunity to get up to $1 million for three, for three years. And so it's an actively open competition grant for, for the HERSA program. So right now, we are just developing that plan on what we want to present to them. And so because it's just an active application, it's at this point, just going to be a proposal. And then we can, of course, present any budget or any budget changes. Those are going to be required both by the HERSA department and, of course, would have to be approved, any subcontractor changes would have to be approved through both them and, and us.
Do you think part of that consortium also includes the, the area that we fund and help fund for recovery?
Absolutely. For instance, the detox facility and the treatment facility, a lot of those members that graduate that program go into Oxford Houses and that Transitional Jobs Program. So what we're doing is creating that sustainability for a smooth transfer to the different stages of recovery within our community.
The application.
My questions are not meant to be that I'm in any way against the commission approving this. I just feel like at the point in time where that information's available, I think the public should know how it's being divided.
Absolutely.
The requirements of the grant actually requires a four taxpayer ID consortium at minimum. It can, it can have any additional added to that, but the minimum is four.
Good. I think we all recognize the hazards involved and the, and the work needed for recovery on this, full recovery. And it's not just done one day. That is a, a continuing process for those that have been addicted. Okay, I've moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Not, roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hearst?
Yes. Now, on the business items, Reno County Health Department would like to utilize the Kansas Department of Health and Environment COVID-19 ELC, Expanding Infrastructure Grant, to purchase an electronic health record.
Good morning, Commissioners. So what was submitted was a PowerPoint presentation, an agenda item, and a PowerPoint presentation for our request, and then just a spreadsheet of EHR features and pricing that our committee has gone through. So with me today, I have Karen Hammersmith, which is our Assistant Director of Clinical Services. I have Megan Gotchuk, which is our Assistant Director of our Population Services. Of course, Bethany Jansen, who is in charge of our finance and accounting areas. And then Tim is also here with the IT department at the county. Tim and Mike, our Director of IT, has been very much part of our discussion of our different EHR vendors that we want to approve. It's up to you, if you want me to go through this PowerPoint presentation, or if you've, if you've already viewed it and you want me to move to questions, that is up to you, whatever you'd like.
It is my understanding that Mike with the IT department has researched this and approved the use of the electronic health records, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
I wouldn't mind it, just a summary. You don't have to go through every page, but like scope and budget and size.
Sure, I'll go through the important items, how about that? And the important, the important part is to know that this is not something that we take lightly, that we understand that this is going to be a long-term investment for us and for the county. Because once you decide on electronic health record, you need to make sure that it, it functions the way you need it to do, and it captivates the, you know, the purpose of what we want it to do. So let me, where am I going here? Anywhere? There we go. And the reason it came about is of a grant that we received from KDHE, but also KDHE, part of that expansion and part of the funding is they created a network for us to utilize, which is through WSU. So WSU had a cohort of different health departments for us to come together and talk in different languages so we could learn from each other. So if I, if I think something is, is important, but I didn't think about something else in another county, we can kind of bring together those important features. And this is when we came about some of our most must haves. So there was that cohort that was created, and we had meetings with WSU on different functionality and different things that were must haves for our electronic health record for the, for the health department. So this, this criterion evaluation is, is what it kind of boiled down to. When we looked at electronic health records, these were going to be the, the very specific elements that we were, were our must haves or want, like on the very top of our list of what we really wanted from an EHR. So it must be integrated with DASY. And DASY is the state of Kansas data application integrated solution for early years. So it's where all of our stats, all of the statistics from a program goes into DASY, and then that's what's uploaded to the state as far as our numbers. So having that data that can be integrated is extremely important rather than manually entered in two different systems. So we wanted to make sure that there was efficiencies and looking at the EHR and was something that we could enter into one system and it would flow to another system. So that was important. Same with WebIZ. WebIZ, of course, is our, the immunization registry for the state of Kansas. Whatever we put into our system, we wanted to make sure automatically went to the state of Kansas, and we didn't have to dual enter something into that, to that program. The next one is the sliding fee schedule. So we, as far as the health department, we file, follow the Kansas poverty guidelines. So with that, as a person comes in for services, they may, they have a sliding scale to where they, what they may have to pay for those services. It could be zero, it could be, you know, a percentage, 10%, 20%. Having that sliding fee schedule, part of a program is extremely important, helps staff times, looks at efficiencies, and makes us feel more like a business, in a good sense, a business operation that we're efficient, efficient in helping others that come to the health department for their services. Next, we look at electronic inventory for the vaccine, pharmacy, and medical supplies. So you only look, you look at having that efficiency on, so you can actually track what you have in the system, but also you look at charge capture. So I make sure that the vaccine I receive in, I'm billing out for. So we don't have any last, last revenue or last charges. So that's, having electronic inventory is very important for both of those features. And then billing enhancements. So billing enhancements, this is, this is a big deal all by itself. So right now, in our KIP system, if a person comes in for services, we bill that service out electronically through our system. But number one, the electronic health record, what we want is eligibility, so real-time eligibility. So if you present your Blue Cross Blue Shield card to me, if you come into the health department and give it to me today, which is December 27th, let's say you come in also in January 5th, that you changed insurance. Well, if our system electronically looks at that eligibility, I would know before, while you're at the front desk or even before you arrive, if you still have that insurance card or not. It makes it more of a billing service and a more of a, a business service that we can make sure we actual capture and we're fiscally responsible with county monies, that we make sure that we bill the services that we provide to those insurance companies. So that's one part of it. The other part of it is when we bill those services to, like Blue Cross Blue Shield, when that payment comes in, what I'm used to is normal electronic health systems. When that payment comes in, it comes in electronically, so there's no taking anything to the bank. It electronically goes to the bank, is number one. Two, it comes in through an electronic remittance advice, so no more paper remittance advices. It electronically comes to our system, then you can electronically post it to your account. And there's less manual entry, there's less opportunity for errors, and it's so much more efficient. So right now with COVID, if, if we get a $50,000 check, that is a single line item that's $20 at a time. I mean, it will take our staff members days, maybe even a week, to post an electronic remittance of advice. With this system, it's an hour. I mean, you look, you, you post it and then you look at for, you know, any abnormalities. You look, you're going to thumb through the electronic remittance advice to see if there's any abnormalities, but so much more efficient when it, when we look at a true electronic health record functionality. Cloud-based, so that was a request from our IT. If we're cloud-based, then of course, there's nothing that we have to maintain here for servers. It's something that our IT department did request, so it's something that they can support but not have to manage. And then it must be easy for staff to use, including adaptive provider scheduling. When our providers come in, we want to make sure that they can easily get to their schedule so they know what their day is looking like. And then our. And then our visit templates. You make sure that your visit templates start, follow your, any standard of care criteria, especially like when we're doing our OB-GYN clients, that that criteria follows, like the American College of OBs and GYNs. So make sure that if a patient takes care of us and sees us for prenatal care, we can easily then transfer that record to an OB-GYN for delivery. So that's why you have to look and make sure that, that, a lot of those templates are what you need. So, and of course, then, then of course, the steps that we took, of course, we've been trying to update you every month as we go through our steps. So we did look at four EHR companies, and then went on, had demos, did a couple of side evaluations. We looked at Patagonia Health, and that was not linked, there was other things, but these are the big highlights. It wasn't linked with DASY yet, so of course, we did kind of discount going forward. On CDP, CDP is used by a lot of the health departments in, like Johnson County, Riley County, but they're also looking at different EHRs, because they don't like it, because you have to have a separate login for each functionality. So if you want to go into registration, you have to log in. If you want to go into billing, it's another login. If you want to go into the clinical side, and they're looking at different EHRs right now. Nightingale notes, they do not have a sliding fee schedule that's part of the system. And so that's why we're really focusing on QMD. And so that is currently being utilized by Cali, Brown, Atchison, Jackson, Pratt, and Russell County health departments. It is also looked at, being looked at by Riley County and Johnson County. So those two counties right now are looking at QMD also. So, and then on QMD, it went through, it hit a lot of our measurables, what we are wanting as far as our deliverables, on some of our key things that we are wanting out of the EHR system. A lot of these certifications, I've had Mike and Tim look at to make sure that they met their standards. And so then it gets down to that fiscal impact. So we currently do not have an EHR system. We utilize KIPS, which is only a practice management system. It's not, it does not have an electronic medical record also. And then, so QMD, these are, and of course, this is high level. By the time we look at, right now, it'd be a cost savings on an annual basis, but I'm not sure I've looked at everything for QMD. There's a couple of other things I want to make sure that we've included, but I wanted to make sure we received your blessing on moving forward for this proposal.
Do you foresee any big changes, major changes to the state's system that would require another change for QMD?
The two things that we're looking at right now is, there's two possibilities from the state's side. The state does have their lab, it's called Cahill. So a lot of your laboratory specimens go directly to Cahill. Part of our proposal is to go ahead and establish that link since we have the funding now, but that link is not possible yet. The state is working on a link, but part of the money, the infrastructure grant that we have, we can establish those connections now. So once the state is ready, we've already, we're already ready to go. That's one thing. The other one is EPITRAX. EPITRAX is the system for all the state investigations, especially the COVID. So that's the state investigation website. There are a lot of the diseases and disease investigations go through. So EPITRAX does not have that functionality also, but they're working on it. That's another connection that the state knows, that those are two things that a lot of health departments do want, and that we do have the money right now for those linkages to make it more efficiency for us and for them. So they're aware of that, and they're working on those linkages so we can be ready also. So those are the two that we kind of know about. But a lot of the other stuff is really, is pretty standard as far as functionality. Having the electronic part of the, you know, the registration, the billing, and having that, and then having those clinical pieces, it will be big. It will be really nice to have on the health department's side. It'll be, and we'll be able to create more reports out of the system. When we looked at, went to Cali County to look at their report diary that they have, very extensive. They've got really nice dashboards as far as, so you can kind of see, based upon your customization, on one of those indicators that you really want to see on a daily basis. So you can look at trends.
Well, I know how tough it is. I've heard how tough it is for billing and through the insurance and so forth, and how much time that takes and how much accuracy that takes. And so from my standpoint, if you can do anything to cut time down and potential errors down, that that was a big deal.
Well, and if you, if you have a good system that kind of takes care of you, you can take care of the customer a little bit more. We want to make sure that through all of this, customer service is key. I mean, we want to make sure that we're there to take care of patients, and we're there, that they know that we're there for them. And we're not worried about a system. We can actually, you know, take care, not that we don't now, but the system that we have is very clumsy. So it'd be really nice to have a true EHR.
Carla, I appreciate health departments work on modernizing its electronic systems. This is actually, this is going to be a weird comment, but I was actually surprised at how low the price is, like almost like-
Well, that's why I looked at it.
Are we missing something? Or is there, is there a contract for like a number of years where it's going to-
No, and that's why I visited with, I said the same thing. When I visited, when I went to Cali County, I'm like, okay, I'm thinking to myself, why is it so cheap? Well, they bill on, it's the number of providers, not, a lot of the EHRs, like KIPS, bills upon the number of license and users. Well, the number of users can go up and down, and then you're, you have to make sure who's in the system. I mean, that's tough. So if you, because if I really want to hop on, do I have to kick a nurse out to then hop on the system? And so that's why a lot of the systems, and some of the systems that we're looking at is based upon, you know, different other features rather than just the number of licenses. But this is under, only by license, and a lot of your health departments, let's say that, like if you do a normal family practice clinic, you know, every doctor is going to have their own license. You're going to bill based upon their national provider, I do not, denominator, sorry. So their NPI number, you're going to bill based upon their NPI. Health departments don't bill that way. We have one source. We bill under our NPI number, so it's one user. So it's unique. So they're probably getting their fees from, I assume, other clinics and other practices that bill differently, but health departments bill differently. We bill one.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's-
Well, I agree. I asked that question also, I'm like, okay, why is it so cheap? And are you sure?
Don't bring that up too much.
No, but I mean, we want to make sure that we're not, that we're making sure that we don't get hit later with something else.
Yeah. And I assume there's a contract. Is it, is it like a year term?
It's a 60-month.
60-month, five years?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a, there's a one-page agreement and then a 20-page licensed service agreement that I'm working with Joe on. And so we've already started on that work. I've already given it to QMD, and they're giving it to their attorneys on things that we request that need to be changed on that agreement.
Well, I, I think the, the way the matrix and the analysis was done on the different software packages was really good. That's the way I would do it. I appreciate the, the report showing that you looked at four different options and what the pros and cons were. So I don't, I don't have anything really negative to say here. I think it would be good, I mean, just, again, like my antenna's up a little bit because the cost is so low, and I think it would be good when you get a little legal review of the agreement done, that we get a, that the commission through Randy gets a summary of the terms we're agreeing to, and I'd like to see that come back here if it doesn't slow you down any. Just also, given you're moving to a cloud system, I think it would be important for you and Joe to review the specific liability and indemnification clauses that we would have related to the loss of data in the cloud that could expose your users to privacy breaches, I think. It's just a component of moving, you know, private HIPAA-related data into the cloud. And so we want to make sure that the provider has, you know, the right incentive to protect our data, because we're really at the mercy of them in that regard.
Do you want to have that little temp or not? Or you guys?
As per the HIPAA compliance for QMD, I know Mike's going to run that, Mike is on today, but I didn't see any concerns with any of that.
I know that they addressed it, and they, there was like four different certifications that they are part of, and one, of course, the biggest one is part of those high-tech standards to make sure that patient privacy is protected, but I can follow up on that.
Sometimes you see in those agreements where they shift a lot of the liability to the users, and there is, I mean, there is definitely a scope of liability associated with what the users do, but there is also often, you know, potential breaches on the cloud side that the health department won't have recourse for. So, thank you. Good work on the report.
Carla, I have a question. I think it relates to what Daniel's visiting about on cost. You're using state funds to, quote, obtain the system. The costs that you're showing here are the annual costs to have the system operating, but is that correct?
To continue every month? So we will use the, we will use the grant funds to pay the one-time upfront cost?
Correct. And so that's where I'm getting, is that Daniel keeps talking about, I don't believe you're showing that cost in our document, are you?
Yes. So that was the previous slide. I don't know if I can go back, but the annual costs are going to be about the same or less than what we're paying now.
Well, but what about the upfront cost that the state's paying? I didn't see that in your discussion, which is not our cost, but is, is part of the-
Upfront cost to be about $5,000, was it $5,500? I thought it was on there, but I don't know.
$5,344.
I was going to say, so it was on there. That's what I was saying.
Okay, then I misunderstood. Okay, so then, if that's what you're saying, then this, you apply to the state for reimbursement for these funds?
Yes.
Do we already have the funds?
No, it's a reimbursement grant.
Every year?
For the time of the grant, yes. Right now, all of our EHR funds are out of public funds. Is it out of public funds? Okay. And so we would continue that, but this time and attention for this installation would be out of state funds. Then we would go back to, after this grant is done, go back to public funds.
So this is, this is a COVID grant. It lasts up through 2023, so June of 2023. So it, we have expanded funds that we can use up through June of 2023. This was actually the budget for this line item was actually included in the calendar year 2022 budget you guys approved, I believe, in October. We actually estimated at that point that this cost was going to be around $220,000.
Yeah, that's why I'm, there's still a little yellow flag on my ass.
Can I, can I address that little yellow flag? One of the benefits of having basically employees like me or my staff is that most EMR EHR systems also include a billing, a caveat for a billing system or a billing service. And most of those run between 2.5 or 5% of the billing costs. So it would take off the top 5% or 2, between 2.5 and 5% of the, of the revenue that would come in if you use their billing service, because we have a billing service in-house that automatically takes that out of consideration. So although we have it in-house, we've been doing it, we're very good at it, even though it's on a really old system, one of those caveats is they're not giving you to get any off-the-top revenue from us for our, for our billing.
Well, I appreciate that, but you also have to move the other side of the conversation, which is, you know, what is that 5% in total dollars compared to the total cost of operating a billing department?
True, true.
Do we, do we know what that is?
Well, we know what it is with KIPS. I mean, I know how much time I spend, I know how much time my staff spends, but the benefits of an EMR, a new EMR system is that's going to drop. So then our focus can focus on other things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions?
What does the commission wish to do with the Expanding Infrastructure Grant to purchase this EHR, the electronic health record?
Ms. Chairman, I'd move to approve as recommended by the county health director.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the request from Reno County Health Department regarding the electronic health record. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hearst?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Oh, Carla, one other thing, can you, in your monthly reports, put like a integration, progress, complete, like when you start the integration?
Sure.
Like just keep us up to date on?
Sure.
Sometimes these things like just drag on for years if you don't-
Right. And on the back, even now, on the monthly report, on the very back, it says, you know, what's coming up. So I will try to keep that updated every month. Right now, it just said what we were doing in December, so yes, I will do that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is the two resolutions, 2021 Day 38 and 2021 Day 39, regarding establishment of an Economic Development Reserve Fund, and they're authorizing a transfer fund to the County Economic Development Reserve Fund. And I think I'll turn this over to Randy to talk about this, our county administrator. If you've got any specific subjects that you want to cover within this. I know it's all based upon the Comprehensive Economic Development Plan and the Strategic Development Plan.
Right. So the first item would be on the revised Reno County Economic Development Comprehensive Plan, and that's, the comprehensive plan is part of the, kind of a precursor for adopting the resolution to create an Economic Development Reserve Fund. By statute, that's our county councilor, Joe, found that we needed to have a comprehensive plan for economic development. So he put this, what he did is he took what Reno County has done since 1982 and what we currently have, which includes some economic development incentive programs. It also, Appendix A has a strategic plan for economic development from 1997. Put that into one document that would be approved, that we're asking for approval by the county commission, and we can get into the details of that. That's, that can be changed over time. That's what we have at this current time, to be able to create the Economic Development Reserve Fund by year end, so that then the next resolution behind that is authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund where we budget about $400,000 a year for different incentives throughout the year, but most years, that money is not spent, a lot of it's not spent, goes back into the general fund's cash balance, which is fine, but if, and I think a strategic plan of, maybe earlier this year, I believe the county commission talked about creating a reserve fund for economic development. This would allow money that's budgeted and not spent to be, in the general fund, to be transferred to this reserve fund to create a balance that if in hard times during budget years, budgets are cut, there's still economic development funds set aside for future incentives. Most of the money that's been spent recently is for the job incentives program, also for a repayment, and I'm not as familiar with this one, 2021 was last year, $50,000 payment for Business Park. So out of the $400,000 in 2021, $50,000 was spent. So there's 350 that could be transferred year end to create this reserve fund, and depending on how the budget goes for the 2023 year, we'll still have money aside in 2023, even if for some reason you guys made cuts in the economic development line item.
I've often wondered about this $400,000 we set aside each year, and in my thought, and in our conversations, I didn't want to see that $400,000 be continued-
and in our conversations, I, I didn't want to see that 400,000 be continued if we start a, a re, a fund back here, a seed money for potential big projects that might come around, or whatever projects that might come around that the county was asked to participate in. And so when I visited with the county administrator, I, I thought that, and this was just a suggestion on my part, that we look at for next year with budget concerns coming up, is that instead of, of funding 400,000 each year, and then it's turned back into the fund, into the general fund, that we use this first-year seed money as, as a reserve fund. And then look at what our maximum amount of job incentive funds might take up and say, I don't know what that figure would be right now looking, but let's say it's just $100,000 that we would use for job incentives that is already committed to. And then we add a small amount in addition to that for any future things that might come up within the year. And that way, we're not transferring 350 or 300,000 each year out of our budget, but instead, we could conserve maybe 200,000 or whatever that number is and to be utilized for our normal expenses. Is, is that kind of where we were at, wasn't it, Randy, when I visited with you?
Right. And, yeah, to create the seed money now, but then slowly build that up to whatever number the County Commission wants for the future to have in a reserve fund. But maybe if there's 100,000 in job incentives that we see coming in the future, maybe 200,000 is budgeted or 150, what's not spent still gets moved into the reserve fund. So it's still built, it's continued to build up, but this $400,000 number is not just an automatic number that's in the budget.
That way, you don't continue, you can see, you could, you're not allocating an additional amount of money in your budget for the year that would just automatically go back into the general fund. That's kind of where I was trying to save some money to taxpayers in that regard. Does that make?
And the authorization for the transfer of funds, even if in future years, you budgeted 200,000, maybe you spent the full 200,000 on incentives, there's other general fund monies that's unspent, unspent budget authority, that still could be transferred to the reserve fund if you want to still add additional monies later.
In case, say you wanted, say you were thinking there'd be a forecast of a, or chambers looking at, at someone, and, well, maybe the county needs to go out and get an option on some property for that to happen. And I like that idea rather than absolutely buying any property, because then you're, you're kind of held to that commitment. But if you put an option on some property, you don't have that much money involved. And so that was looking at the overall picture and long-range plan. That's kind of where I was thinking of.
I got a couple of questions. One is, when you put it in there, can you take it out for other purposes later?
In the reserve fund, I believe you can transfer back into the general fund for this, to the same line item, what you take it, but you can't spend it on capital project or something completely different. You could put it back in the, I believe you can put it back in the general fund, because that's where it came from.
I just, I, sometimes I don't understand why we stick all these funds in kind of one-way, you know, funds where, okay, now it's all this pigeonhole here and pigeonhole here, whereas you have it in the general fund and you can earmark it and it's still fluid, where you can use it as a, you know, a general savings account versus handcuffing yourself to a future that you don't know what it is.
You can put it back in the fund it originated from, but the reason to move to some reserve funds, because they're non-budgeted. And so once there's money there, then if something comes up and it's needed, you don't have to depend on budget authority.
Okay.
The cash is already there.
This is some of the complexities of government budgeting that I've never quite understood. But so to, Mr. Chairman, your point, I, like, I think there's a problem with this entire document plan if we have $400,000 a year and we have a very active chamber, economic development group, group, and they can't spend $400,000 of grant money every year. Like, we have created a plan that does not work. We have money that is for the plan. And so I don't think it's a fact that nobody wants to use it. It's a fact that the county's plan stinks. Like, I, just to be, like, I think somebody needs to say, like, this plan is not good. Like, we have $400,000 that we've allocated to develop the economy in Reno County and we can't spend it. So the reason I asked for it to be on the agenda was that obviously it's not, we don't have time today to redevelop this, but it needs to be redeveloped. Like you pointed out, it's two and a half decades old. So.
Math was wrong a while ago. I said 15. I should have said 25.
So, um, so I, I have long since been bothered by the fact that we, we took the initiative to create a small amount of funding to stimulate Reno County's economy. And, but we keep blaming perhaps the economic, you know, the chamber or whatever for not spending it. I actually think it's because this, this, this economic development plan doesn't, doesn't do the job.
I, I have a tendency to agree with you on that. And that's why I think it needs to be relooked at. And then when we look, when we relook at it, that it's so general and we've talked about all of these items forever, but nothing's been done to really help any one of these. And so that's where I came about with the fact, and I thought maybe we needed to look at some of these. Not all of them, but let's see the areas. Let's, let's have a work-study session, as, as I think the county administrator recommended, to look at this and to update it and to then pick out the things that we, with this extra funds that we've got in, that we can actually maybe make some good and set some goals and action plans to get there and not do all of them. So I agree with you.
Mr. Sellers? Well, I agree with what part of what you both said, but, but I think that what the county administrator is proposing here is a big step forward for the future of economic development in Reno County, as far as the Reno County portion of economic development, to have a reserve fund that has monies, how much, we don't know at this point in time, but monies that are set aside so that when that project comes up and is needed, are there. Because the county has always had a problem with cash funding economic development situations in Reno County. And I can recall back, even when Seaman was here, our fund was so low that, and I'm not saying how much we should have done then or not, but by having this economic development reserve fund, we're going to have, the county's going to have more flexibility in the future to be able to react to a condition that will occur.
Yes.
So I think we should approve the two resolutions. And then I think we should take a look at this comprehensive plan dated December 28, 2021, and see where it might need to be changed for the future. But due to the time situation here, I think it's a great improvement to have a reserve fund. And I might disagree with you how much that fund should have. You're suggesting that if we've got monies next year, we can go out and spend it necessarily. I'm saying, we don't know whether we want to spend it next year or '23 or '24. But the, the fact that we've got a reserve fund, I think is a huge step forward for the county.
I think we're all on the same page, pretty much on this. My, my thought was, in budgeting for previous years, that a, the commission decide how much they want to transfer, or how much they want to allocate to be transferred back to this fund, rather than the 100, 350,000 every year. That's what I'm getting at.
I think you're suggesting that budget time, we take a look at a placeholder for that economic fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Sellers, why don't you make your motion?
I move that we, I need some help with resolution numbers, so.
Twenty-one, the first one would be 38.
And which one is 38?
That would be a resolution establishing an economic development reserve fund.
Okay.
That's necessary first. And then the trans, authorized transfer would be 39.
Okay. Commissioner, before you, because 2021-38 does say that the establishment of the comprehensive plan is in place, we would probably need to approve this first, knowing that in the near future, you want to make changes to it.
Okay. So my first motion would be to approve the revised Reno County Economic Development Comprehensive Plan dated December 28 to 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the revised Reno County Economic Development Comprehensive Plan dated 12/28/21.
Yeah, I just, I, on my comments on that motion, I'd just like the record to reflect that. I find the current plan to be dated and insufficient, but it's, it's kind of the placeholder we need to start with.
Roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hearst?
Yes.
Chairman, I would move that we approve Resolution 2021-38, which is a resolution establishing an economic development reserve fund.
Okay.
Moved and seconded to approve. Motion as read. Roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hearst?
Yes.
Chairman, I would move that we approve Resolution 2021-39, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds to the economic, the County Economic Development Reserve Fund.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Motion as read. Roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hearst?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate the work you've done on that and the thoughts going forward. I think all of us do. Your monthly department report.
I don't have a lot on the, for the administrator's report, but we have the monthly department reports. I wanted to see if the commission has any questions. Again, as a reminder, we're doing half the departments at each meeting instead of all in one meeting once, once a month. So this is the second half of departments. Any questions? This has human resources, IT, maintenance, public works, registered deeds, sheriff, solid waste and youth services in this, at this meeting.
You have any?
So the HVAC unit has been installed.
Yes.
And then I saw the, the, there was some, the, the project schedule from Fishney. Is that, is that like, is it moving? Is it creeping?
Probably. Well, yes. Depends on the weather. And I know they have the crane today to put some of the, start bringing stuff back to the top of the dome. So the front doors are closed over at the courthouse. The windows, they still have the fourth and fifth floors to do.
This has been like the perfect weather for winter for construction, hasn't it?
It hasn't. I know toward the end of last week, I think they were, or gone for the holidays. There weren't many people around working, at least from what I saw.
Has the, has the dome cap been resolved? Like the, the dome cap? I don't know what house to put it.
It's in the process. I think we've addressed everything that we can at this point.
But it's not going to be like still open when spring rains come?
It, it should be done by then, yes. I plan for it to be completed by that time.
Do we have any contractual?
Penalty? No.
Nothing. Not a thing. Okay. There's no deadline they've committed to or?
They committed to one, but there was no daily charge for not having completed. A lot of times on other contracts, I know Don, when he does bridges or road work, if they are not done, they pay a fee. This one does not have that.
Hindsight's always better than foresight. This is one of those contracts that having a penalty fee would have got the thing done quicker.
And I think Fishney had some staffing issues also toward the beginning, as a lot of us have had. And I know they're doing good work. It's just taking a lot longer than we expected. It's quality work, though. Any other questions?
I've got one here. Do we need, have we already, the agreement to releasing the signed claims, do we need any action on that? Was that already done on the opioid with, with the state?
I believe, Joe, was that already the signature for Iran of the opioid settlement? That was already approved, right? He just needs to re-sign it?
Yes. The document that was submitted to us, the original document that you signed, came to us from the Attorney General and we submitted it and they changed it and added a paragraph after you signed it. So just found out about that. So if you would, yeah, that's already approved, but yeah, we need to re-execute it.
Okay. Thank you.
Randy, I've got a question on a different item. When do you feel like that the federal government will give you the final population number so that we can finalize those district maps? I think that's important, as quick as possible, to have those firmed up.
I talked with Donna, I believe, two weeks ago. And I know that Jenna then reached out to the Secretary of State's office to find out some information and we're waiting on that. So I know Donna is working on that.
Okay.
Randy, on, and I, I just wanted to, this isn't like a thing I need today, and I think we've talked about it a couple of times, and I wanted to just bring it up for the other two commissioners. Just as we, you know, get into budget season mid-next year, and just the conversation we had with the Health Department this morning, I think reiterates a need for me, I hope the other commissioners agree, to better understand kind of what's inside of these departments. And from a, you know, we have this many employees and I think just the Health Department in general is probably one of the more complicated departments we have. And understanding what's grant-funded and, you know, what's taxpayer-funded, what's fee-funded, I think is going to be very helpful come June. And if we get it all in June, it might be hard to intake all at once. And so if there's a way to, like, I envision like a departmental profile where, you know, we, we just see, here's their budget, here's their source of revenue, here's what they spend it on, here's their employee count. That would be helpful for me. I know that was, that's a lot of work to put together. I don't know what the other two commissioners think, whether that's valuable to them or not.
And we are working on the thing to break out the employees and how they're funded. Getting into the department and the budget level, that is something that we will be working on for the '23 budget.
The, the grant stuff especially bothers me a little bit, because it's almost like that's an intention of the federal government, is to create bigger government here through grants. And then all of a sudden, the grant drops out one day. And I think we heard from the Health Department this morning, which I don't, like, we can have a different discussion on the merits, which seem very valuable. But the fact of the matter is, is at some point, you know, we think it's a great idea to, you know, develop these new things. to, you know, develop these new things because it's, you know, free grant money, and then the grant is gone, and then we have more government long-term. And so I, I was just a little concerned on the commission not understanding how that works, and then all of a sudden we're just, we don't even know it, and we've created these things.
Yeah, so like, the Health Department, that one this morning is, you know, as they mentioned, so Seth's position was already budgeted. It's out of the property tax, or it's out of the Health Department. They're now applying for grant to help recover some of that money, but it's not a new position. He was already in the fund. It's just now, since there's grant money available, can we help offset our other costs? So that's one of those words, not increasing employment. But I know what you're saying, sometimes there are federal grants that if you give the grant, you create a new program, you create employees, the grant runs out after three years, and then you're stuck with either laying someone off, letting them know the grant's over, or putting it into your property tax fund. So, yeah, we can go over that with the different positions and different departments that have grant funds. And that kind of leads into my next comment that I wanted to make is, I wanted you guys to start thinking about a strategic goals, priorities, planning session. We had one this last January, but to have another one for the 2022 year. So as we talk about mission statements, vision statements, you know, values, the county departments, myself, know what you're looking for, what your top priority, priorities are as we start putting budgets together and large projects that you want to see worked on in '22 and then '23 also, because that will affect the '23 budget. So if you guys can start looking at a time, I recommend in January after the reorganization of the commission.
Can we look at that now?
Yep.
Want to have it after a commission meeting or a different day? We would be meeting on the 11th and the 25th in January. 11th would be the, who the chairman takes over?
The 11th looks fine in the afternoon to meet. Two, three hours?
Probably three, yeah.
Uh, January 11th would be fine if you want to do it during a working time. Last time we did it on a Saturday, which worked out well, but if you want to do it on a Tuesday, that's fine with me, too. And January 11th would work for me.
Schedule that, then? If we can schedule things now and know about them ahead of time, that's better, I think.
Okay, uh, one more comment if we're going to do that. As I recall, we all made a short list or long list of thoughts we might have as an important item for that upcoming year, and the purpose of the meeting is to try to quantify those, correct?
Right, you guys came up with ideas, sent them to me, I could compile them. And if you have, I would also recommend if there are any questions or projects that involve specific departments other than overall county, if I get that list, then I can also have a director that may be impacted at the meeting for different times during the meeting.
Do you have a list of priorities for 2022 that would maybe come to us before we send back our list?
I can give you, I can put up, put my list together and send it to you so you kind of see it.
I think that would, great.
Yeah, I like that idea.
On the 11th, so that probably, if you have a, the commission meeting in the morning, maybe then in the afternoon, come back, maybe there's a break in between, but come back at 1 o'clock.
Aye.
And have it from 1 until you're finished.
Good.
That's all I have.
Mr. Friesen?
Um, just a couple of comments. I was at a chamber breakfast in a couple of weeks ago, and they, they took the time to recognize all the community benefit organizations or, you know, charitable organizations in the, in the community. And it was just impressive to see the robust group of nonprofits we have in Reno County. And it was very, very, we're very blessed as a county to have so many different agencies focused on the, on, on, you know, nonprofit work in, in the county. So appreciate the chambers' work on putting that together and allowing the community foundation to take the lead in that as well. The, I'm glad Don's here. I, I had a question maybe Don could help with related to the new highway, K-61, I always get 61 and 96.
96.
96, right. Where, when, so if you're com, like Bueller people, like, if they're trying to get to Nickerson, it's, if, if you don't know what's going on, it's like a 10-minute detour. I mean, it's probably a 10-minute detour if you know, it's 20 minutes if you don't. Can the county put some detour signs on some county roads to get people funneled around? Because you get so far, I know it says road closed, but you have to go so far around, I don't think people know where to go.
Okay, if we can do that, I can also contact KDOT because they should be doing that.
Okay, I don't know what the other commissioners think on that.
Well, I haven't tried to go from Bueller to Nickerson, so.
Are you talking like, being sort of like 56 is closed or 80 second or something like that?
Yeah, well, so this, this has happened to me twice now. So two months ago, I went to meet with the Nickerson City Council, and I was on 56, and I saw the road closed sign, so I went north. And then I, you know, and that just made it even worse. And you have to go, I think you had to go all the way to Fourth or?
It'd be to the next blacktop road.
Yeah, and so, so I, I think people are doing that, they're going the wrong, and it's just, it's not clear which way you go. And, and then the mayor of Bueller and I went to Nickerson for that meeting, and we were late because it, it was a, I mean, you know, it's, it's a 20-minute drive to Nickerson from Bueller, and it was 30, 35 minutes, which is okay, that's just part of the process, but we were, we, we weren't thinking through that. It wasn't, wasn't clear on how to get there.
I'll look at that and I'll contact KDOT today.
Okay, thanks, Don.
I think that's a good comment, Daniel, that when you get out there and you see that, were you on 56th or were you?
We were on 56th, and I forget that, it's, it's not Monroe, what's the next one west? Hendricks is, I think, where you got to turn.
Yeah, I think you're correct that a lot of people would come across there and not know which way to go, and they need to be directed one way or another. Good comment.
That's all, thank you.
Okay.
Couple of weeks ago on Friday, I was with county staff on our appraiser interviews, and I believe the county administrator is still working on a recommendation for us on those. I do think the process that the county administrator uses with three groups of interviewing applicants works extremely well for our director positions, and I, I like the fact that he's gone to that very much. I've had a couple people express some interest in the new commissioner areas. I hope that people start thinking about those things, and that's why I think these maps are so important to get done as soon as we can. And then finally, as the chairman did early in his comments, I'd like to thank the county staff for their work with me this past year. Everybody that I've ever asked for information from the county has been very cooperative. I think I've said this in many, many meetings, but I think we have a very good group of county directors and employees. I couldn't be happier with their work with me as a commissioner. I thank them very much for this year. So with that, thank you.
And I, I, I want to make sure that when, I think you brought it out, Commissioner Sellers, is that when we talk about staff, we're just not talking about directors, we're talking about all the employees. And so I just want to make sure that, that they are recognized in, in full meaning of staff. Another thing I found useful is every year, and, and especially, it's, it made it a lot easier for me when Randy did the resource book. And so I found it useful to go back through that resource book after the end of the year and before the start of the next year. And I think that gives us a lot of direction and understanding. So just encourage everybody to go through their resource book again. And so at this time, I would.
Chairman, I was wondering if, if a break was in?
That's what I was getting ready to.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't going to get in right away because I noticed Commissioner Sellers is already on his second cup, and so I didn't want to run dry. And so for that matter, I'd like about a 10-minute recess, let's start again at 10:30, okay?